It's seven o'clock and there's a quorum present, so I'm going to call this public's part of the meeting to order. We just had an executive session, forty-five minutes, to talk about the Nagog Pond litigation. And Peter, Barry, and I will be meeting with representatives of the town of Concord on Thursday. We will be also talking with council next week. And then there will be a second meeting with Concord reps after that. So first item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Anybody with concerns that are not on tonight's agenda, please come to the mic.
How's that? Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not a hundred percent obvious.
That's where the people at home.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I'm Paul Malchodi. I just wanted to address a concern. I'm concerned about the NARA parking fee. It was implemented here last month. I felt, when I learned about it Saturday, a week and a half ago, the day it showed up at NARA, I felt, I went and I looked at the minutes and the agendas of the Recreation Committee in the selectmen, I thought it'd been overly hastily implemented without adequate public vetting. As most of you know, I'm pretty heavily involved in rail trail advocacy, and I think it's a preemptive attack on Freeman rail trail users, one that should have had more discussion than it did. Who else but Freeman rail trail users is going to come from out of town to want to park at NARA? And after years of promising that we would provide parking at NARA, we suddenly decide that we're going to provide that parking, but we're going to put barrier up between you and the parking. And I think that the effect of it will be to escalate a war between towns for who gets to block other towns' residents from using the rail trail in their areas. Westford, as you know, is the, "You can use the rail trail here, but only if you don't actually come into Westford town." And we're at risk of becoming like that with this. You know, I know your minutes haven't been published yet for those meetings, so I was only able to glean from the agendas that you considered two meetings. One where you heard the Recreation Commission's inputs, and the next one where you voted on it. And when I just think something of this magnitude, it's a major change in public policy to charge a parking fee at a public park, something we've not done in Acton previously, should have had broader vetting. I'd ask you to reconsider it in the future.
Okay, thank you. I do, will say just briefly that there were a number of questions, and I think the Recreation Department is going to have to sort of weigh as this project proceeds. And I think that it probably will be subject to change depending on what they discover about as the parking fees move forward. But certainly, our town manager will communicate that concern to the Recreation Department.
I could elaborate. I brought a whole bunch of stuff, but I'm not sure it's worth, you know my basic sentiment, I'm not sure it's worth my.
If you'd like to submit an email to the Board of Selectmen, we'd be welcome, comments, if you want to do something at greater length.
Okay, that's great.
Okay. Katie?
Yes, Katie.
Just want to add two quick things. So we actually, and you can see the video of our meetings, it's out quicker than the minutes are. We actually did not discuss it at that first meeting because Recreation Director couldn't be there, and our meeting went too late. So it was actually only at the one meeting, but it was discussed at a number of Recreation meetings and in our packet for both meetings, Selectmen meetings. I do want to note that there are eleven spaces for the rail trail that are designated for the rail trail and will not have any charge. So just in case you did not know that, that is still a part of that. And it's actually mostly, they have parking issues now. It's largely not related to the rail trail. It's mostly people coming to use the beach and to use the picnic facilities and other things there. So it's aimed more at that rather than rail trail. So we'll have those spots, we'll have spots at Donlins, and as you know, and other areas as well. So I, you know, I appreciate it and agree, you know, appreciate your comments on the public input, and as Janet said, we'll pass them along. But just in case you didn't know those parts.
I will in my email elaborate some thoughts about costs and expenses and what the benefit, the potential benefit of having parking rangers versus the lack of benefit of having parking rangers is. Because I just don't see it, I don't see any purpose for it or any benefit from the fee at all. It's not going to stop anyone from using NARA who currently uses it. It's not going to make more parking. It's not going to, it's not going to create any improvement. All it does is create a hassle and find a way to hire four or five more people and probably not pay for them, who weren't approved by a town meeting vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Mr. Hahn.
I guess you all know me. David Hahn, 105 School Street. I'm here to express a concern about the implementation of Chapter N, which is the procedure for the demolition of historically or architecturally significant buildings. There's a property at 184 Main Street where there's a proposed 40B. It's currently a house on the Cultural Resources list that the Historic Commission put a demo delay, twelve-month demo delay on, I believe on March eighth. And if you read the demo delay bylaw, I'll just paraphrase it, there's supposed to be a legitimate six-month effort to find an alternative to demolishing a building like that. Whether you agree whether it has a lot of significance or not is something else, but the Historic Commission felt that it does, otherwise they wouldn't put the delay on. So what happened last week was that the Planning Department held a all-department meeting, which they invited DRB to, which I went as a DRB rep, to look at what the developer was proposing for this site. So essentially, they're not supporting Chapter N, and in fact, they're doing an end run around it by holding an accelerated meeting. I mean, the project hadn't even gone really through the normal process of going to Nancy Tavernier's committee. They talk about it. It comes out of that committee with an up or down sort of endorsement. So that was, for some reason, not held. And then they immediately went to a department review meeting and were soliciting comments and pros and cons about this project. So my concern is that we have a Planning Department that is essentially ignoring Chapter N. And whereas they could be helping out the Historic Commission, which is understaffed and, you know, need some help in this, in figuring out a solution for these buildings that are being knocked off here and there, mostly for 40Bs. And to me, the Planning Department could certainly have said, "It has a twelve-month demo delay on it for six months. There's supposed to be a legitimate effort to move it, preserve it, rehab it, do something." And they just completely ignored that and went, and are setting it up frankly for, to get all the approvals in place, so the day after that demo delay expires, poof, the building's gone. And I don't think that's the way that law is supposed to work. And I'd like, you know, the Selectmen to see what's happening.
Thank you, David. I actually was at that meeting. Nancy Tavernier had invited me to that. I do remember that the twelve-month demo delay was mentioned. That was really a preliminary meeting. It was an information session for the town staff. And as you said, Nancy's committee has not, had not yet reviewed the project. They are scheduled to review it at some point in the near future. And ultimately, if it got beyond Nancy's committee, because it is labeled a friendly 40B, it would eventually come to our committee. And that sort of issue would obviously come up. But there is, I don't want to engage in a discussion about this right now, but I will talk to people in the Planning Department about this. I don't think that they were trying to do an run around bylaw N, although I know that you're very, you know, a staunch protector of historical properties, so perhaps it appeared that way. But I will talk to Planning and address some of the concerns. Peter?
I'm just wondering where the building is. Is this South Acton or where, which building is this?
184 Main, it's shortly, if you would start at the train station, we head up Main.
It's shortly before you get to Ace Hardware on the left. It's a little yellow house. I mean, it looks, I'll admit, it doesn't look too impressive, but they did put the demo delay on. So I guess all I'm saying is that we wish the Planning Department was a little more supportive of one of the committees in town, is what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Barry Rosen. I'm just wondering if the Selectmen, I noticed on tonight's agenda, we've got two committee charges, including the Open Space Committee charge. And I'm wondering if we know when the Selectmen intend to bring the RAC committee charge forward for residents to hear.
We don't know, but I am tentatively hoping that it'll be on the next meeting agenda. I mean, honestly, I am trying to pull together a search committee, and those two charges were pretty close to being done, much simpler proposed work. So, yeah, I take responsibility for the fact that the charge is not on tonight's meeting, but there are reasons for that. I am trying to scramble to get a search committee together. That is something that has to be done in the coming year, or we're not going to have a town manager next year, so. But it is on, tentatively penciled in on my little agenda, my very small brain, which is shrinking every day, for the next meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay. Thanks, Jon.
Thank you.
Tara Frederick, West Acton, I have a number of issues to concern.
Tara, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Because this has been a more robust citizens' concern, and I need to read a notice, and then we will go back to it. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on June 5, 2017, at 7:10 p.m. On the cancellation of Guacamole Inc., doing business as Ixtapa Mexican Grill and Cantina for an all-alcoholic beverage license located at 5 Nagog Park, Acton, Mass., the application is on file in the Selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Go ahead, Tara.
Okay.
I'll have to interrupt you in a few minutes to read another notice, so.
Sure. Relative to the 184 High Street, I read through Chapter N, too, and it looks like there's a whole process to go through to save these buildings that town staff seems to be completely ignoring. In fact, the email that I got about the all-hands department meeting referred to the 40B process as tight timelines. And so they're engaging in this process to speed up the building design without having engaged in the preservation part of Chapter N. And just to give you an idea of what happened when the, we went into a process to preserve the 296, 298 buildings, I just wanted to give you a copy of the difference of the before versus after. So if you look at what the town staff is currently pushing, and I'll get to this in a moment about the concept of staff pushing things for specific applicants, the difference is dramatic. When we actually had the time to sit with the architects and urge the Board of Appeals to do something that wasn't injurious to the neighborhood, and I just want to give you a copy of the difference because the.
Tara, do you know how long you're going to take? Because honestly, citizens' concerns is typically for a very brief sharing with the Board of Concerns. This is not an opportunity for you to provide a lecture, and I will have to read another notice.
The top one is.
Hold on, hold on. Let me read another notice, just because we're now behind schedule. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 5, 2017, at 7:15 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 of the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of New Garage LLC, doing business as Import Domestic Auto Center at 317 Central Street, Acton, for a used special permit, 4/21/17-466, under zoning bylaw section 3.5.20, vehicle repair. The use is existing. The applicant also proposes to have for sale up to ten vehicles at any one time. The applicant can, application can be inspected at the Planning Department and Town Hall during normal business hours. All right. Continue.
Thank you. The top, Jon, if you could pass those out, I think you were passing those down the table. The top one is what the applicant originally proposed, and it looks a lot like the one that the applicant is proposing for 184 High Street, excuse me, Main Street. And then you'll notice at the bottom one is what the, they're actually building. So you can see that the difference is really dramatic. If you looked from above, you'd see that it was, instead of one square building, it ended up being two buildings. It's very different. So I urge us to ask staff to engage in a process that's more sensitive to the neighborhood. Second thing is that I got a copy of the email that came from Ron back relative to writing a letter to the EPA about the Superfund sites. And I urge the BOS to do that. When I was a Selectman, we regularly got suggested memos for the Board of Selectmen to put forth to the EPA that were written very carefully by Myrie Michaelman and the ACES group. And so I applaud Ron and the other technical folks who are writing stuff like that, and I urge the Board of Selectmen to take those memos and use them to both establish that we have additional harm than what we agreed to when we settled the Grace case, that a lot of things have come forward that we didn't know about at that time. And it's my understanding from Town Council at the time that if we had additional harm, the first step is to document that and notify the EPA of our feelings. So unless we document that, we won't be able to leverage our municipal rights when the time comes for us to do so. The other thing is about the RAC charter. I just wanted to echo the town meeting resolution, which asked the town to do something as soon as possible, not after all the administrative stuff was out of the way. So I understand the urgency with respect to the town manager search committee, but perhaps maybe it's time to move the liaison role for the water stuff to somebody that has more time. I've noticed Jon has done a lot of work to research the aspects, and she's had a lot of experience with the Grace site and things like that. So maybe that's a possibility. I want to address the concern, my concern about mosquito spraying, that town staff is engaged in contracts with the state relative to spraying, mass spraying of what I view as dangerous chemicals, including GMO spore-producing bacteria. And I think that we should be reviewing that with more care. I made the concern to town staff, and it was basically said that that's what they're doing, and too bad. So I urge the Board of Selectmen to have a hearing about that. I noticed that last couple of things are relative to your Goals and Objectives meeting that's coming up, and I hope that you put forth Tree Clearing Limits bylaw to get staff to do, spend some time on that. Concord has put something in place to that effect. And if you put that into law in the town bylaw, it's not subject to the seven-year grandfathering that it would if it was in the zoning bylaw. So I hope that that becomes a priority. It'll take care of a lot of problems, including carving footprint and growth, et cetera. And the last thing is my concern about the subdivision zoning bylaw that's being put forth by the Planning Department. I think it's a mistake for staff to promote and sell changes. I think that that's a mistake. I think they spend a lot of time with developers. I think that the proposal is very developer-friendly, and that I think that they should spend more time finding out what we want and doing what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add, Tara, that there's a difference between doing the RAC charge and pursuing the items that town meeting strongly supported in the water articles. That's all I want to say. I have to cut it off right now, because honestly, you've had more than enough time.
Thank you.
And we have two hearings, okay?
I just want to make.
Thank you.
Water was.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have Guacamole, and it's 7:10. And there's a history to this. It's actually straightforward. So I don't know, Council, would you like to introduce? What it is, is that this is a license that we issued last year, sometime in the middle of the year. The applicant supposedly paid the fees. Both checks bounced, and ultimately, the applicant didn't pick up the license. And now we're considering revocation. Obviously, you have to provide notice, legal and preferably actual notice to the applicant, and the applicant has been elusive. The restaurant was closed not long after, or maybe it never opened, but basically, the license got no use, and the applicant is very difficult to find. And town staff, including Lisa, has gone well above and beyond the usual efforts to try to find this person, find relatives, somebody we could actually serve with a notice. And the applicant, this person is being elusive. I think that now we have kind of the point where we're ready to move forward, and I guess we just need a little bit of guidance, perhaps some background from Jessica, town manager, about the history of the efforts to provide notice and where we are right now.
Thank you very much. Jessica Wall, I'm here with Anderson in Krieger Town Council's office. The background that you just provided is exactly on point. So Ixtapa is the business name for Guacamole Inc. Guacamole Inc. previously held a liquor license issued by this board, I believe in 2016 and maybe in years prior. They came before the board and asked for approval to change manager in August of 2016, and the board approved that change in management, which is where we got the most current information about where to contact the manager for this particular license. He tendered a check for license payment in December of 2016 for the 2017 license, but that check bounced because of insufficient funds. He didn't check in, this gentleman's name is Alejandro Brambilla, that's the manager who we've been trying to contact for a little over a month. So he did not follow up about the insufficient funds, never paid the license fee, never picked up the license. I understand that the business at 5 Nagog Park has been closed for about five months or so, four or five months, and that the board hasn't received any information about what's going on with the license during that time. So the board had, I'm sorry, so on May 5th, the board sent, in order to show cause, which is for the hearing tonight, by certified mail to the latest address that we had for the manager, received that as a bounce back, that nobody had picked it up, and then reached out to his former attorney, to a phone number that we had for him, an email address. Lisa reached out very diligently, and we haven't been able to contact him. So the board has two questions before it at tonight's hearing, and I would recommend that it take a vote on both of these issues. The first is whether to vote to determine that the license issued in November 2016 is forfeited under General Law Chapter 138, Section 70, because it had, the license fees have not been paid, and the license is therefore void. That's question number one. And then question number two is, even considering if the license is not void because of lack of payment, whether to vote to cancel the license for non-use under Chapter 138, Section 77. One note about the non-use cancellation. If the town votes to cancel the license for non-use, typically licensing authorities allow a sort of grace period that would allow a licensee to transfer the license or restart the business. Sometimes that's up to six months. And in that case, typically, the licensee demonstrates that they're making good faith efforts to try and resolve the issue. Here, if the board votes to cancel the license, I recommend that the board allow some grace period of maybe one to two months, and publish notice in the newspaper that as of a certain date, the license would be canceled, just because it's been difficult to contact the manager, and we want to make sure he has notice.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Katie?
Jessica, I guess the only question I have, is there's another business that's going to go into that location shortly. The board gave that business a common victory license, I think at the last meeting. So how does this reclamation issue work if he's not even going to have that location to operate in?
I think even though he holds, assuming that the license isn't void, if he holds the license, I think he would receive some period of time by which he could say, "I'm transferring the license to a different location," or "I'm selling it to a different entity." It doesn't necessarily have to attach to only that property, because he could come before the board and ask for a change or a transfer for a different location.
Katie?
So just to clarify, Jessica, you think we should vote to cancel it versus to find it void? I mean, they haven't paid the licensing fee in over six months. Is there a reason that we wouldn't say that it's void, because they forfeited it? I mean, we, you know, they haven't paid it, they sent us bounced checks, and we've tried to contact them. To me, it seems like we should say you forfeited this license.
It's really sort of a button-suspenders approach to just ensure that all interests would be extinguished. But you're right, that I think the board, I would recommend the board vote on both, just to be very clear, so that even if the license were not void, that it would be, in fact, canceled for lack of use.
So we would vote that it is void, or that they've licensed, or they've forfeited it, but then also that we're canceling it, even if it's not void? I mean, if we already vote that it's void, isn't it void? Doesn't our vote make it void, right? Like, I guess that's my question. Why, how, in what scenario, if we vote it void, is it not void? Because even if they came and paid it, we've already determined that they forfeited it, so they can't un-forfeit it.
It's in the board's discretion. If the board just wants to vote forfeited and void based on lack of payment, then that should be sufficient.
Okay. Peter?
All right. If we void it, how long do they have to appeal?
The appeal period, I would have to check into, but I'm guessing that it's no longer than thirty days. We would include that in the decision to them.
Okay. Anybody else, Jon, anything? Well, yeah, I understand the appeals. Attorneys are big on alternative arguments, you know? Let's do this, and just in case, alternatively, and sometimes it's really conflicting, an alternative, but do this. So I think that if we are going to do, follow Council's advice and do both things, that the grace period, how long a grace period would you recommend? Because I know that there's some case law. If we're going to give grace period, I mean, six months, is that long enough? Or should we, can we get away with doing one month or two months? It's just that this is the last sort of all sort of liquor license that we have until the beginning of next year, so, and there are businesses that would like to have it. So it's in demand, which of course might be an incentive for the current licensee, wherever he, it, she is, to try to transfer it, but anyhow.
So it's in the board's discretion how long of a grace period you'd like to provide? I've seen grace periods as long as six months. I think particularly because the license holder's been difficult to contact here and hasn't made a showing of diligent effort to try and bring the board up to date, that maybe six months might not be warranted, something shorter, maybe two months, a month would be sufficient. With the notice publication in the newspaper.
Okay. Board?
I'll move that we find that Guacamole Incorporated, doing business as Ixtapa Mexican Cantina, on the premises at 5 Nagog Park, has forfeited the license that the board issued. I don't have a date in this, I guess it was 2016, but, I'm sorry, 21st day of November 2016, for non-payment of fees, license fees pursuant to the statute, which Council referenced, Chapter 138, Section?
70.
Seven?
70.
Seven, zero. Okay.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Are we leaving it with the one, the one option? Is that what you're?
I'm frankly kind of comfortable with that.
Yeah, okay.
If we're going to do the second one, I would just do one month, which is apparently a close to the appeal period, and they'd have to appeal the first one.
Okay. No, that's fine. I mean, if nobody feels strongly about having a second alternative, we can just leave it with the first. Okay? Anything else? I think we're all set. And I have to read another, another notice. I'm late here. But it's connected to the next hearing anyway. Under MGL 140, Section 58, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 5, 2017, at 7:25 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of New Garage LLC, doing business as Import Domestic Auto Center for Class II Auto Dealers License at 317 Central Street, Acton, Mass., 01720. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours.
to the appeal period, that they'd have to appeal the first one.
Okay. No, that's fine. I mean, if nobody feels strongly about having a second alternative, we can just leave it with the first. Okay? Anything else? I think we're all set. And I have to read another, another notice. I'm late here, but it's connected to the next hearing anyway. Under MGL 140, Section 58, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 5, 2017, at 7:25 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of New Garage LLC, doing business as Import Domestic Auto Center for Class II Auto Dealers License at 317 Central Street, Acton, Mass. 01720. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. And back to Guacamole, are we, do you need anything else from us, or are we?
No, I think I'm all set.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Jessica, for
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Providing guidance. All right. So we have somebody here representing New Garage? Somebody?
Yes.
Hi. Would you like to come up and speak at the podium and kind of introduce yourself? And I think most of us who are, well, all the board were, at town meeting, but we know that there was a zoning bylaw amendment that addressed your property, so I think we were expecting that this would arrive at some point, so.
Yep. My name is, my name's Jim Genari, and I am a part-owner of the garage in Acton, and my partner, business partner is John Travers. We bought the garage in late 2014, and what we are hoping to do is have the ability to address one of our customers' many needs, in that folks are looking for used automobiles, whether it's for their son or daughter that just got their license, and our customers are looking for us to buy some of their older vehicles, because they either are not getting a great deal at a dealership, or their child is now going off to college and they no longer need that vehicle. So it gives us an opportunity to address another need for our customers, and we have ample space to do that, and we feel that that's a great opportunity for us to create some stickiness with the customer, in that if we're selling them a car, we're selling them a car that works, but hopefully that person comes back to our garage for any type of oil change and service. So that's what we're asking for.
Thank you. And before I open it up for questions and comments from the boards, I'm going to read the last notice of the night. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice on June 5, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204, the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Blackbird Cafe Inc. at 340 Main Street, Acton, Mass., under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a Common Victualer License. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. And now we're back to the New Garage. Are there questions, comments from the board about, this is the first item, this is about, I want to make sure, it's the, it's the, it's the Class II Dealer's License, which is, no, that's the, it's the, no, it's the special permit. Yeah, the Class II Dealer's License is 725, so this is about the used special permit, basically to be able to sell, have up to 10 vehicles for sale, only five vehicles on display, and they're used vehicles. So that will come up in the next, next stage, which is the Class II Dealer's License. Any questions, comments? Katie?
Well, I only had one question, and I don't really know which application applies to more, but the, you had kind of given us a drawing, I think, of the current conditions and where the current parking is, and so there's like 20 spaces, that says they're for service drop-off, and then eight or so spaces for, or 10 spaces, I think, for extra, and then some employee ones. Where would the five for, which five kind of would you be using for display of the vehicles that you might sell?
They would be the five that you would be able to see from the road. Specifically where we would place those, we haven't necessarily decided yet.
Okay. But kind of this chunk?
Right. Yep. Where we would probably place those would be up towards the dumpster area.
Okay.
And keep in mind, this is, this would be part of our business, we don't, this would be a small part of our business. Our main business is fixing automobiles, and we just see this need from our customers that this is a great opportunity for us, and it's a good opportunity for them.
Yeah, so it would just be sort of a case, so you imagine probably be more only up to the five that you can display at one time, as opposed to this kind of extra five that you can have that you can't display, that you, I guess, could sell. But your intention is really somebody comes in and says, I've got this old, you know, whatever car.
We're not rich, so we're probably not going to
Right, I'm buying a lot of.
So it's just a matter of customers, if, and you don't know. You don't know, and as far as some customer will come in this week and say, my daughter doesn't need this car any longer, and then some customer will come in the next day and say, my son just got his driver's license. What do you got for me? And I don't want to spend $30,000 or $10,000 for a car that I know he's going to smash up. That's why we're doing it.
Judging by some of the cars I see in the high school parking lot, apparently some parents don't want to spend that much on the car.
I'll be in that situation in another year, so, yeah. So I understand what our customers' concerns are, and that they're going to hit something with a car, get me something that's safe. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right, well, thank you. I think it seems like a good fit, so.
Peter?
So this parking layout you gave us is no change to the current site. That's exactly the way that it is. Obviously, you would have described that in your application. And you're talking about being open and having these cars for sale six days a week, I guess, but closing at 5 o'clock, so you're not changing lighting or anything like that.
No. If you've ever worked in a garage and pounded the concrete for eight hours, you want to go home. So it's been pretty much daylight when somebody, daylight sales in effect, so if somebody wants to come in and look at it, we're working anyways, but we have no intentions of staying until 8, 9 o'clock at night trying to sell cars. That's not, are going to be our business.
Okay. I mean, I was, I was a selectman assigned to this site plan review, and I'll note that comments from staff and the planning department have no objections to this. It's consistent with what town meeting accepted as the change in the zoning bylaw for that law.
Joan? Okay. Audience members, Tara?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton, I live around the corner from here, and there's a reason why we have a special permit, and I think it's to put conditions on that are specific to preventing injury to the neighborhood. I love the idea of them selling cars. I would like you to put a condition that if they're not going to do it at night, which I hope they don't, because we don't, I don't think we want big lights blaring in that neighborhood all night long. I would also like a condition that they don't put those big flappy curved cloth signs, flapping in the wind, and other types of things. Actually, that was a question, whether or not the zoning uses allow two signs, one sign, 10 signs, because the signage is something I also want to avoid, having a lot of there.
Do you know, Peter, about sign, sign regulations?
The sign bylaw is extremely controlling of types of signs that people can put in town. I mean, the town spent a long time working on making sure that the signs were attractive and of a size that people felt was consistent in town. I have no idea what the used car, you know, what signs would be allowed on this site. They'd have to apply for, to the planning department to put up any signs, is my understanding. So it'd be consistent with whatever the sign bylaw restricts it to.
It's a special location. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I do urge you to put some limits on both the signage and the amount of lighting, because there's the, right now, the sign bylaw and the lighting bylaw effectively are the same on Route 2A when people are going 45 miles an hour, as opposed to people are going 25 miles an hour right next to people's homes.
I would add that because it changed, the zoning was, changed, changed it from residential, village residential, to West Acton Village, I think the signage is going to be whatever's allowed in West Acton Village District, which does allow some business-related usages. I don't know. I know there's a system, there's a system, town planner in the audience who perhaps probably doesn't want to be called on, but I don't know, Kristin, if you have any more guidance on signs, which at least I don't understand.
Sure. I can calm your fears a bit, Tara, that moving signs are not allowed, so the flapping when the wind signs, they're not allowed. And West Acton Village has different signage than Route 2. It follows village sign guidelines, which are kind of, if you think about more pedestrian-oriented type signs, they're
Low five.
They're different, so.
Yeah. What about lighting? What about the industrial?
Well, the town just amended the lighting bylaw to incorporate LEDs, or LED lights, sorry, and so the Kelvin has to be 3,000 Kelvin or lower, which is that warmer glow, and so, you know, we have full cutoff lighting bylaw.
So it can't go off their property?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I don't think that this board has the authority to put conditions on a site plan special permit that are more restrictive than what the zoning bylaw would allow as of right. So I would be comfortable with a condition that says they'll operate during the hours in which they, you know, represent on their application, which is daylight hours, so that I'm comfortable with. But any other restrictions on lighting or signs that might be different than what the zoning bylaw requires, I don't think we have the authority to do that.
Any other comments, questions from the board and the audience? Because do we want to clear, close the hearing and make a decision?
I was going to say, I like the idea of restricting the hours. Thank you very much.
You have a question, or? Okay. I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Katie moves. Peter second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. All right. Now, decision. What are people, you have a motion, Peter, or?
Yeah, well, our first move that we grant the site plan.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do them separately.
Yeah.
I think it's a used special permit, Peter.
Yeah. It's used special permit, it's a 715 one.
Oh, 715 one. Okay.
I had to circle the time, so there was.
We grant the application of New Garage LLC, doing business as Import Domestic Auto Center at 317 Central Street, for a used special permit, under zoning bylaw 3.5.20, and make the, we have to make the findings for a used special permit that is consistent with the findings that are required by Section 10.3.5. It's consistent with the master plan, harmony of purpose and intent of this bylaw, will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is to take place, is appropriate for the site in question, and complies with all applicable requirements of the bylaw. Now, the condition, I'm looking, I know I saw their hours somewhere, I don't know whether it was this one or the second one, but which one we put that condition on, I'm not sure. But anyway, I'll move that we grant that used special permit. I guess we put the condition on the license for selling cars.
Somebody want a second?
A second.
Joan, was that you? Okay. Peter moves, and Joan seconds.
Katie.
Oh. It's a female voice. With regard to the used special permit, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. And now the Class II license?
Okay. I'll move that we grant the application of New Garage LLC, doing business as Import Domestic Auto Center for a Class II Auto Dealer's License at 317 Central Street, limited to the hours. Okay, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and Saturday from 8 to 5 by appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Katie?
Yeah.
Peter moves, and Katie seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. You're set. Thank you. All right. Now, Blackbird Cafe. Is there somebody here representing? Great. You have a choice. You can, you could sit there at those mics, or you can go and stand at that microphone. Whatever is your pleasure.
Hello.
Hi. If you could just, well, we already have read your application, but for the benefit of the vast TV audience at home, maybe you'd like to provide an overview of what you're applying for and where you're going to be located, which frankly is very exciting to me, because I'm not in West Acton, so I've been looking forward to a new place closer to where I live, so.
My name is Luke Kenny. This is my wife, Katie Kenny. We are residents of Groton. We have a restaurant in Groton called The Blackbird Cafe, and we are very excited to be opening a Blackbird Cafe in our hometown of Acton, at 2A and 27, 342 Gray Road.
Questions from the board? Comments?
I'll just make a comment. I remember when you guys came, it was one of the Board of Health meetings, that actually didn't overlap with our meeting, so I happen to be at it, remember you guys came and like Janet being very excited. It's just so everybody remembers the, where Acton Coffee used to be before they moved to West Acton. So it's really great to see another cafe going in there. There's been a lot of changes in that plaza. Jim is in there, so I see it frequently, but it's nice to see a cafe going in there again, and I think it's, I was really excited to see you guys. That was a little while ago, so I'm excited it's moving forward, and you seem to be coming. So just wanted to say thank you for wind open location here and welcome to town.
Thank you.
Peter? Joan?
What are the hours of operation?
You can turn on your mic, and you're going to ask. It's probably in the material.
What are the hours of operation?
I think we are at seven, six thirty.
Six to four is our general hours, whether that's 6:30 to, yeah, we're going to kind of figure that out, but six to four is our hours in, our hours in Groton, and that's what we'll do here in Acton.
Seven days?
Seven days.
Thank you.
And I did notice that, I guess, Board of Health has approved, approves 25 seats maximum, and I guess you're working on sort of the food permitting side of things, anyhow?
Yeah. The, we did meet with the Board of Health late last year, early this year, and we got some, a few additional seats from what was approved there previously. In the future, we probably will be back to seek more once we can determine our water usage at the site, but we are marching ahead and, you know, working to get final approvals and sign-offs on everything this week.
I remember, I think Acton Coffee had installed some very kind of modern bathroom. I remember hearing about the bathrooms and how they were very environmentally friendly, and I never had occasion to go in and use them, but I just, because I didn't stay long enough, you know, to, but, but I don't know if you're going to be making changes at, or you're going to overhaul the facility completely to reflect probably what you have in Groton, or?
Yeah, so this space actually is a little bit bigger than the previous space. It's acquired and taken on the Bank of America ATM footprint, and within that space, they, we've been able to bring in all upgraded facilities for the bathrooms and washrooms, and brought in, you know, water-saving, you know, yeah, for those facilities.
Okay. Well, I'm glad, yeah, I used to use that ATM, and I was a little bit annoyed that it, when it went away, but I'm glad that it's gone to a good use. And I made the mistake this, today I was looking at the menu, it was close to lunch, and I honestly was just so hungry. It's a, it's a great menu. So I'm looking forward to trying everything on it, so. Any other questions from the board before I, audience members, any questions?
Hi, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
I can't remember if it was Acton Coffee House or what, but there was a concern, because I guess it's Zone 1? Is that right, Barry?
It's Zone 2.
Zone 2, and
Why is grease filtered?
The grease filter, and I was always interested in whether or not the purveyors would commit to using organic or, you know, naturally-occurring things for soaps, et cetera, and Acton Coffee House refused, and I wanted to get your opinion on what you plan to do about relative to toxins and chemicals. Thank you.
We do use as much in our, the hand soaps and things like that environmentally, and even the dish soaps we use are, some of the detergents that we use in the dishwasher are mandated by the Board of Health more, but I think we are pretty good about what, you know, our usage there, and we actually have two grease traps that were installed, so we have a large one that was put underground and a separate one under the sink as well. Yep.
Yeah, I do, I do recall. That site is challenging, I think, where water issues and wastewater issues and wastewater are concerned, so it's good that you've done all those things, and obviously you're working with the Health Department to make sure everything is in compliance. So, anybody else from the audience? All right, I guess, should we?
I will make a motion to approve the common visual license for Blackbird Cafe Inc. at 340 Great Road.
Second.
Katie moves and Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Welcome to town, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And you'll see us all, or some of us there, soon.
Very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go, because we skipped over the chairman's update, because we were falling behind, before we go to selectmen's business, I just want to go through chairman's update. The Acton Area League of Women Voters will be having their annual meeting in Littleton on Monday, June 12th. The Acton Boxcar United Way will be having their annual meeting at West Acton Village Works on Tuesday, June 13th. The Board of Selectmen's annual goal-setting meeting will be Wednesday, June 14th, at the Public Safety Facility. There is a fair housing compliance workshop by the Regional Housing Service Organization or the coordinator on Thursday, June 15th, in this room. I've signed up for it. Father's Day is Sunday, June 18th. Remember your fathers. There's a classical concert at NARA Thursday, June 22, featuring A Far Cry, and BOS members, please remember to respond to the dinner invitation no later than June 15th. And just one last, I just wanted to make sure that people are getting their selectmen's reports into Lisa, to the extent that they have anything by Thursday before the meetings. They really are part of our responsibility to keep the public as well as each other informed of what we're up to, and frankly, it's in our individual interest to show that we're actually providing some sort of value, and it's frankly a more efficient approach to updating people than the practice that existed when I joined the board in 2010, when we took up a good chunk of every meeting presenting our reports orally. And some of us actually took to typing them up in advance so that we could just be more efficient, and eventually that turned to, we submitted them to the secretary so that she could just paste them into the minutes. And then, most recently, it became that everybody types up their reports and just submits them for the packet so people can read them, and we don't have to take up meeting time. Gradually over the years, I think that we've adopted more efficiencies because frankly the workload isn't getting any lighter. I remember before I joined the board that the selectmen were still using meeting time to do the final screening of candidates for town committees, and I can't imagine are doing that now. I think we would never get done. Future agenda items, probably June 19th, I hope. We will be revisiting first an executive session, and then an open session, the town manager contract for the coming year, and I am preparing to have an outline of the search process, the town manager search process. I've been meeting with a number of people and going, going through some old files to try to pull that together. As I mentioned before, I'm hoping to have the overhauled RAP charge, and I actually have talked with Joan about the possibility of her taking over the liaison role after seven years. I just have too many other tasks that I frankly have to get done in the coming year. And then, possibly at a future meeting, if not at our next meeting, is a possible revocation of the Rapsgalian Entertainment License. So, Mr. Manager?
Just, just a couple of items. As I reported at the last meeting, our electric aggregation plan has been approved by the Department of Public Utilities. I did have a, a meeting with our energy procurement consultant, Peregrine Energy, last week. Our game plan is to open electric bids on the 13th of June, look at them, analyze them, see if they're, they're, they're good or not, and then we will, assuming the rates are very favorable to the community, we'll do an educational rollout, kind of with the goal of October 1st being when electric aggregation would take place. So, finally, after months of being in front of DPU, that process is moving. Secondly, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Veteran Service Officer is, is holding a flag retirement event on Flag Day, June 14th at 7:00 PM at Woodlawn Cemetery. So, anybody who has an old American flag should bring it over, and the, the retirement ceremony process will take place. If you can't make it and you do have an older flag, you can contact Jim McCray, the Veteran Service Officer, at vso@acton-ma.gov, or call Jim at 978-929-6614. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next, we're moving on to selectmen's business, and the first item is Open Space Committee Charge Update. Katie, maybe because you're the liaison, you'd like to explain what this is about?
Sure, so, the, at the last Open Space Committee, which was my first committee, meeting as their liaison, they just discussed some proposed changes to their charge that I think they've actually been discussing for a little bit of time. They currently have, the original, the, or the changes kind of, in the earlier paragraph that you see are just to indicate that it is established, that it does not need to be established, but the main change is that the Open Space Committee currently has just seven members, one of whom is actually a member from the Board of Selectmen, and one who's a member from the Conservation Commission, and one from the Planning Board. They have a lot of work that they do and really need support of actively involved members, and so for both that reason and the fact that they're advisory to the Board of Selectmen, felt as though it made sense to have the Board of Selectmen be a liaison position as opposed to a member position, so that they can have a full-time member there, and so it doesn't kind of conflict with the Board of Selectmen person being a liaison versus a member. I felt very comfortable with that. I think we're liaisons to the majority of committees, and I think that that's appropriate. Again, you know, I really do feel like when, when they are advisory to the Board of Selectmen, it makes more sense that we, that the Board of Selectmen sort of person is a liaison rather than a voting member on that board. And, and again, it frees it up for somebody who can actually put in the hours and the work that they need, because as you know, as liaisons to a million committees and our primary responsibility is being to the board, you know, I, we don't have time to be the primary, primarily focused on the Open Space Committee's work. And then, again, for that need for, for assistance and people who can actively work in the committee, they've also requested adding two associate members. A lot of other committees have these as well, and I think this committee was created before, maybe a lot of them did, so they just wanted to add that in. So, again, I felt comfortable with those changes. They unanimously voted to adopt them and to propose bringing them to us, so I wanted to bring it back before all of us tonight.
Great, thank you, Katie. Any comments, questions from the board? Audience?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. While we're looking at the charge, I would like very much, since we have increased awareness about economic justice, to consider adding something into the Open Space Committee about assuring that people in the village have adequate open space with the pressures to build in the villages, either from market or Acton 2020 desires. I still think it's important for people to have open space, and even in the cities, they are requiring planning to have a percentage of open space in the villages, and when we are bringing small parcels to the Open Space Committee, they repeatedly tell us that they do large parcels outside the villages, and I feel like we're being ignored, and I think that coming from you, it would help if we added a phrase in there about ensuring that all people have access to open space. Recently, there was a big development that went on, and in, right next to Davis Road, and the people who lived there became suddenly aware of the lack of open space that they have access to. And so, to prevent that in the future, I hope that the Open Space Committee's charge will include something to do with economic justice, to include the villages as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Aronson, Hosmer Street, Chairman of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. I would strongly recommend that you delete the "up to" seven and leave it just at seven. Creates problems with determining a quorum.
That's true. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Okay, motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the Acton Open Space Committee Charge, including the deletion of the words "up to" before "seven" in the last bullet.
I'll second that.
Katie moves, Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thanks. All right. Next item is 53 River Street Master Plan Committee Draft Charge. I know, Mr. Manager, you probably know more about how, what, whose input this reflects. I think I submitted some comments at one point, but this is very different from what I last saw, so.
Well, it is primarily, is a draft put together by the land use director with some input from me.
Okay, questions, comments from the board?
I thought, I thought it was a little, I thought it, and this is gonna sound, because the last one I said, I thought there was a lack of direction and not enough information in there, and then this one I felt like there's a little bit too much. It ties the hands of the committee a lot, which is kind of exactly what they have to do, as opposed to giving the committee a little more way to, to kind of evaluate it. I know, I think it's following a lot the process of the Main Street Master Planning Committee, which, you know, it, it makes sense, and perhaps it's a reaction to that in some ways, because we've kind of, that committee has had to try to figure out how, how we want to proceed, but I wasn't sure, you know, I don't know, I, I just felt like, well, if this other committee comes together and wanted to proceed a little bit differently and didn't want to have sort of these mandated, you know, tasks of how many public forums or things that they have to have, I didn't know if it was a little too much direction or if, if the land use director felt like they should have that much direction, because other committees may have gone a little astray or in doing things differently than what he may have recommended. I'm okay with it, I just wanted to bring that up. I didn't know if other people felt like it was a little overly.
Is there a time, timeframe?
No, I think that it, it contemplates that the job is going to be done within a year of, it says recommendations to the selectman with one year of its creation, so I think that they're looking at a short timeframe for working, and that may be part of the reason that the, there's, the language is more specific and somewhat circumscribing, but.
Because there was, there was some discussion about, will we, we go back to CPC and seek reimbursement from CPC for acquisitions, so in order to do that, you kind of have to know how you're gonna use the property, so there is probably a little more urgency than other committees on this.
Any other comments from the board? Comments from the audience?
Hi, David on 105 School Street, is the draft charge publicly available? Maybe I missed it, is it posted or anything?
It's in our packet.
Oh, okay. And does it mention a membership?
Seven, yes. Seven members with working knowledge of affordable housing, architecture, engineering, historic preservation, horticulture, landscape architecture, land use planning, repair and ecosystems, wetland restoration, or related discipline.
Okay. Does it have a neighborhood rep on there? Or is there, is that recommended to be on there?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't specifically require that somebody from the neighborhood be a member. I mean, obviously, if somebody with those other relevant skills happens to live in the neighborhood, then.
Right, okay. So, so do the people on, that they listed, they, do they come off committees or do they come off from wherever we can get them?
Wherever we can get them. Which is probably good, because most of the people on committees are on like eight other committees right now.
Yeah, there's no, there's no requirement of, of representation from different committees, it's just those disciplines, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on our, it's on our, in our packet on the website. Anybody else from the audience? Do we have a motion, or?
I have just one small comment, just that I agree with the neighborhood rep. If you're doing something in a neighborhood, to have somebody that lives there, I think is important. Too often, we try and do things to the villages and to these neighborhoods, as opposed to doing things with the people in the neighborhood, again, economic justice. Also, I, I'm going to go downstairs to the 40B discussion at the BOA, and I just want to say I'm in support of the gas leak bylaw discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I don't, how do people feel about adding a recommendation that one of the members live in the neighborhood? I think it would be better if it's a recommendation, just in case somebody doesn't come for it. I don't know how you feel about that, Charlie.
Charlie Aronson, Hosmer Street. We struggle every time somebody's from the neighborhood as to whether they have a conflict of interest or not.
Oh, true.
So, I would recommend not putting something specific in, and then we can test the applicants as they come through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee interview process.
Okay, that sounds good. So, I will make a recommendation to approve the charge for the 53 River Street Master Plan Special Committee.
Second.
Katie moves, Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. And now, okay, the anti-gas leak bylaw discussion. The actual, this is, I don't know, this is probably not going to be much of a discussion. This is basically to get this onto somebody's radar screen, mostly the, ours and the town managers, and probably town staff as well as councils, but based on the discussion at our last meeting, where there was a fair amount of interest in, in moving forward with some sort of anti-gas leak bylaw, I think that it would be wise for us to start working on, on different potential language, and rather than have, form another committee to work on drafting something, I, I would prefer that we authorize the town manager to work with town staff, council, and residents who are interested in being involved on, on different language options. There are a number of options out there, and presumably, the people who get involved from the, among residents would know a lot more about it than I would and any of us, so I think that just put together something, work on, on some language that can come back to us for formal discussion and approval, and ultimately, the idea would be to make a recommendation to get something on the special town meeting warrant in December, assuming there is going to be a special town meeting in December, but if not then, then it would be an annual town meeting next year, so. Do you have some thoughts about just how you'd like to see the process move forward?
Yeah, no, I think it's great. Thank you for putting it on here and moving the, the conversation forward, and I just, my only comment was, I, I think it's great to have the town manager and staff and council work on this as well, and I think it would be beneficial to have an early meeting with some of the interested citizens that we've heard from, specifically Green Acton, two of the folks I know are interested in this are in the audience, as well as mothers out front, and since I've been sort of working on the natural gas issues in general with the two folks in the audience, I, you know, happy to volunteer myself to be the kind of point person from the board to, to help work on this as well, and just to note that Deborah and Jim have been working, you know, again, when we've been talking about these issues on a broader sustainability policy or issues that we might want to bring to town meeting, and how this might tie into that as well. So, you know, happy to kind of be the person to hopefully shepherd this forward, again, for either December or if we don't do December annual, so.
Well, that would be great, thank you. And yes, I was assuming that Green Acton people would be involved in this effort. I was expecting them to be. I was gonna demand that they be, no, anyhow, but thank you, thank you very much. Any other comments? Peter, Joan, okay. Yeah, do, Jim, do you have? You're not shy, I know that.
I just wanted to wait my turn. I'm very comfortable with the direction this discussion's going in. I'm very comfortable with the direction this discussion's going in. The, having staff time in particular focused on, you know, working with town council to look at the various bylaws that are already out there and under development, and, you know, coalescing the best practices and putting them forward as to, for the Board of Selectmen to discuss, seems like a wonderful way to go. It is true that Mothers Out Front has been working a lot with gas leaks, and we'll have some information about what bylaws are out there and what features of those bylaws seem particularly important, but we're happy to just, you know, feed that information in as we find it and, you know, send it to Steve and the Board and whoever else you want us to send it to. And if we get called to a meeting, we're happy to show up. But I don't think we have any special, I know I don't have any special expertise on this particular kind of bylaw, and I'm sure town council will be able to uncover that kind of information really efficiently.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just request you also keep the Green Advisory Board, Jim, involved in the loop. I'll forward the emails we have now, but there's certainly a lot of expertise there that they can bring to the subject, so thank you.
I think Ms. Symes has a comment.
A super quickie, Deborah Symes, Concord Road. Just to piggyback on that, Peter, we may want to keep 2020 folks in the loop on that as well. Thanks.
Great. Well, I think everybody's on board about this. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Do you want an official motion? The Rapscallion Town Manager, or just one of them?
I don't know. Do you want, you want formal authorization to move forward? No.
I agree.
We'll hold you to it.
You've got the sense of the Board on this. Everybody agrees on this.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, and then, okay, the last item in our business is discussion of possible one-day entertainment license. This, I think that the town manager is aware of one instance where a resident had, had an entertainer come to perform and charged a head, you know, cover charge for people who showed up, and basically, that was, you know, they're sort of conducting business in a place where they weren't supposed to. It wasn't a fundraiser or anything like that, so you might be able to weigh in more on that, Mr. Manager. But then, more recently, we've been getting requests from a certain place of business that was trying to fill in gaps in its entertainment license with one-day permissions, and we basically said that there is no real, really no one-day entertainment license, and so we thought it would be a good idea to get this on the agenda. I mean, I would say that the one thing I would not want a one-day entertainment license to be used for is to fill in gaps in a, an entertainment license that we've issued, because that's, you talk about doing end runs around licenses that we've issued in our authority, that would be it. So, if we're going to authorize somebody to provide entertainment, then that's it, and the license covers it, and if you've neglected to cover all the times that you want to have entertainment in that license request, then too bad. So, anyhow, that's why this is on, on the agenda. I don't know if people have any strong thoughts one way or the other. If we were to authorize this, I think we would want to have sort of a proviso that you can't use this to fill in your, if you have a year-long entertainment license. I mean, you can't use it typically. You shouldn't use it to fill in unless it's for, say, a nonprofit fundraiser or some good cause, but, you know, I think that we've been encountering a problem with somebody trying to cover gaps that can't be covered, because we've said no, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I'll agree with that. I think, you know, if we, when we give liquor licenses, we don't then allow, they wouldn't need it, but, you know, if we gave a liquor license to somebody, they can only use it. The only thing I could think is, for example, we have certain hours in liquor licenses, and occasionally around, like, New Year's and Thanksgiving or whatever, they'll come and ask for an extension of hours, but they, that has to be a permit. So, I think similar thing here, where there's a, similar to the one-day liquor license, there'd be a one-day entertainment license that, you know, for people having one-off events, I guess, if you want to charge for a clown at your house or what, I don't know what it is. That'd be weird, but, you know, whatever. But that people holding, it's not, as you said, Janet, for people to regularly, you know, add to their full-time entertainment license, but just for the occasional one-off event, but they have to come before us. And I think the only thing we want to make sure is, again, that they apply and know they have to apply with enough time to come before the Board of Selectmen, because they know we had issues in the past with one-day alcohol licenses not being, getting to us, you know, in enough time, and them wanting, you know, special reprieve to do it, and then us to approve it after. So, we just want to make sure that's clear. But I think as long as we have a clear process, it's a good thing to have, and then, you know, but it's not to supplement, regularly supplement, a full-time entertainment license.
Peter?
I'm wondering what the situation is now. I mean, somebody, obviously, if somebody wants to have a band or the party in their backyard, they don't need a license to do that, but what about now? What about these wedding receptions and things, if they have a band there? We don't have any entertainment license at all right now. Is that?
Right, so that's what we're talking about, is trying to regulate that. The first instance came up, it was a private, or concert at a private home. Who was it? I want to say John Denver, but he's dead. I wouldn't pay to see him if you would. But, John Davidson, excuse me, I knew it was a John with a D. But, so it was a private event where they were going to charge $50 a head, you know, he's a professional entertainer, and planning got kind of involved, because it was, is it a, is it a, is it a kind of a one-day business and all that? So, this would kind of regulate that, you know, maybe fundraising, you know, a not-for-profit fundraising thing at a restaurant that typically doesn't have an entertainment license, maybe a wedding reception where they have a band, things like that.
Other comments?
Is there a standard for one-day license?
Pardon me?
Is there a standard for a one-day license that other towns use?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, with the Board's approval, we could come up with a form and a recommended fee for the Board to look at maybe at the next meeting.
And then, you know, we could probably make sure there's some sort of limitations put in, yeah. Okay. That sounds good, and we don't need an official motion or anything like that, right? Just the sense of the Board, I never know. All right. Consent agenda. Item nine, Farmer Winery License to Sell, Coastal Vineyards, Acton, Boxborough, Farmers' Market. Item 10, Accept Gift, Recreation Department, Board to Accept a Gift of $75 from Anonymous to be used to support the 2017 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 11, Accept Gift, Natural Resources, Board to Accept a Gift valued at $235 from Lisa Nelson-Friedrichs. Item 12, Committee Appointment, David Wellinghoff-Hoff, West Acton Sewer, Action Advisory Committee, Finance Committee Representative. Item 13, Committee Appointment, Leslie Johnson, Associate Member to, is that you, Charlie?
Yeah.
To full member, Commission on Disabilities. Item 14, Committee Appointment, John Benson, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, Finance Committee Representative. Item 15, Committee Appointments, Jason Cole and Steve Noon, Acton Leadership Group, Income Representatives.
Hold.
Item 16, Committee Appointment, Gary Yu, At-Large Member, Capital Planning Improvement Committee, or it's Capital Improvement Planning Committee, it's CIPC, anyhow. Item 17, waiver portion of application fee, Planning Department, Groundwater Protection District Special Permit 76. Okay. Executive Session, May 22, 2017. That was in the confidential folder. And 19, Request to Dispose of Obsolete Materials, Acton Memorial Library. Okay, wait a minute, go back. Okay, so, Mr. Aronson, you held item 13 about the COD appointment.
Yes, this may be a technicality, but I haven't seen the resignation of any member for her to fill the position.
I think looking at the packet, that it was because there was a member who hasn't been able to attend, but I don't think she has resigned. So, do they need, or do we need to vote to, and who is it? The COD, or is it us that votes?
Well, the COD, at the same time they requested her promotion, should have said, change this other person to an associate member, or to remove her from the committee.
I think they wanted to, yeah, I don't know. They want to switch. Yeah, I didn't know if it was switch or remove her, because she's been unfortunately ill.
Yes, I understand the situation. I'm cool with either, but we're trying to keep track of.
Yeah.
I think that, actually, this should have reflected, she's moving from associate to full, and the other person is moving from full to associate.
Yeah, I suggested that, so I'm not surprised by it.
I mean, the request, I think, was for both.
It just didn't happen.
Excuse me?
And it just didn't happen?
I don't think it was clear in the email that was from the COD in our packet, that they were moving Cindy to an associate member.
They didn't mention, all they say is she hasn't been able to attend.
Yeah, so I think maybe we should get clarification from that, them.
Yeah, well, we can just, we'll just hold off on acting on this.
I think it makes sense, it's just.
Okay. Clarify that they want to move, yeah, because if you say that they don't have any other openings, then that's.
No, they don't.
An issue. Yeah, they're having a problem with attendance, because people are missing meetings anyhow, and it's tough for them to get a quorum. Okay. Item 15, a number of people held this about the ALG.
We don't normally approve ALG, and I don't think it's appropriate for us, too.
Okay, we don't, okay, that's sort of weird, okay. And item 16, what did I put? That was mine. I put hold on everything.
Seventeen, I think.
Seventeen, okay, the Planning Department waiver fee. Who held that?
I think both of us, but my question was, is this the Ford property? Ford that Leo came to see us about? I mean, I don't know anything about this fee. He agreed to up the amount of money he'd pay for the sidewalk fund, and now it looks like he's trying to reduce the fee from five grand to two. I mean, it probably makes sense, but I, there should be a little more explanation here. I don't know what the ground, I don't know what the application fee for the Groundwater Protection District Special Permit is, so what does it do? It apparently reimburses the Planning Department for work that they say they're not, it's not going to be required to do. Is that what the normal is?
Did you hold this?
No, I have the other one. But, no, I remember, and I agree with Peter, I think it's that they've already done, they had already previously done the work to look into this, I think, probably for a different permit, and so they weren't going to have to do all of the work again, the research again, so our fees match the amount of effort that staff has to put in, because it, fees can only really recover the time, you know, the costs that you have.
The Planning Department supported this, because they said that, you know, they didn't need the money, because they've already done the work.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. So, we're going to hold on that. So, do we have a motion to approve the remaining consent?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items nine through 12, 14, and 16 through 19.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Nobody wants a second?
I'll second it.
There you go.